Twenty twenty four, I'll begin with roll call. Counselor Height.
Here.
Counselor Meany.
Present.
Counselor McGuire.
Present.
Counselor Gass.
Present.
And I am Counselor Chapel. To my right is interim town manager Josh Tiffany, and we also have Justine Hutchings, Finance Director with us this evening. We're going to kick off our FY twenty five budget planning tonight. Counselor McGuire was kind enough to prepare revised materials for budget planning based on the discussions we had at the council retreat in September. So I'm gonna just kick it over to Counselor McGuire. I know that I missed the last meeting and you folks decided on a couple dates in January and February to set aside for the bulk of expense planning. Is that correct?
We, yes, we put placeholders on two dates just in case neither one may work. Something tells me the first one was a pipe dream. That the February one is much more realistic.
Right, and it was January twentieth, which is a Saturday, and February tenth.
Correct, yeah, that's Saturday. And as we get into the discussion on the agenda, the Saturday piece will make more sense, I think.
So, well, before I actually kick it over to you, Dan, let me just give an overview of what we had talked about at the retreat. So, at the retreat, we, we had a long discussion about what worked and what didn't from our last budget cycle. I think there was consensus all around that we wanted to sort of condense what was about thirteen to fifteen meetings down to much fewer if possible. And the idea around that was to have at least one, if not two, full day Saturday meetings where we try to get the bulk of our expenses fleshed out. And then we will supplement that one or two, those one or two meetings with workshops already planned, preferably in advance of any currently scheduled council meeting. Additionally, we, we talked about revamping how we present the budget. I think there was a lot of confusion last year, especially when we had to amend the warrant articles on the second time around at the town meeting. So, the plan is to present as much material in the format of the warrant articles as possible so that it's easier to digest and follow, follow along when you're voting at the polls. So, Dan did an excellent job running with that and mocking up some materials for us to go over tonight. Dan, I'm gonna turn it over to you if you don't mind.
The first one I think we want to look at is the one that's titled "The Budget Workshop Agenda." It's the six-page one. As we talked about before, in the end, we present to the voters the warrant articles. And the warrant articles, much of the format is dictated to us. So, the thought process is, rather than doing something completely different for twelve weeks and then rushing around at the last minute to shoehorn it into the shape it needs to be for the voters, let's just start with the document that everyone is gonna see. And hopefully, over time, people will become more comfortable with the language and the format and the presentation. Because we, I don't think we really have to change a lot of the language. I mean, there will be changes from year to year because different issues are presented to the voters. But, you know, I think it's one of, eighty percent of it will always be the same. So, I started with just an intro to help everybody sort of get organized. You know, the state domain requires the town council presenting municipal budget to voters as a series of warrant articles to streamline creating the budget and to make the process easier to follow from start to finish. The council has organized its budget workshops by the order in which the warrant articles appear on each June's ballot. And then I tell them that I don't put anything in here as far as dates and times are concerned, but I do give everybody a link to the meeting portal so they can find that out. First article is electing the moderator. We don't have to talk about that anymore because that's just for the town meeting. It doesn't appear on the ballot. Articles two through five are all revenue questions. It makes sense in my mind to talk about revenue before we start talking about expenses. Let's find out what we've got in the kitty to spend rather than just talking about expenses high in the sky kind of stuff and then having to cut things because we didn't know what the revenue was. So I think it's, this is putting the horse back in front of the cart. So, the second article is, is basically the revenue budget. I have a question about whether I've actually captured all the revenue accounts, but we can, obviously, this is a draft. Articles three, four, and five don't raise money. What they do is they, the voters give us permission to spend the money in particular ways. So we really don't have to discuss Article three, which basically says that if we sell any property at value to a hundred thousand dollars at last, that that's, that money is gonna go into the capital reserve fund. Voters get to either say yep or nope. Article four gives the, the council the authority to accept or reject donations for, from, from basically any source for a variety of reasons, most notably things like the recreation department, the Dryville Schoolhouse, the Great Public Library Association, Fire Rescue Association. And then Article five allows the council, gives the council the authority to apply for any federal, state, or private grants and funds and then to spend the money as appropriated. Article six is the municipal expenses. And there are these, a total of nine departments or, or programs within Article six. Their administration, community services, council boards and committees, facilities and parks, which of course we've renamed from the old buildings and grounds, law enforcement, library and recreation, and municipal finances, public safety and public works. I have within the confines of everything, if it's not numbered, I've alphabetized it. It doesn't matter the order in which these things are, but it makes it much easier to, for people, I think, to, you know, if you're looking for, you know, general assistance, it's not the first one in the list. It comes after elections, which I just think makes more sense. I've also added line numbers to all the documents. I'm a fan of that. I, I'm gonna keep pushing it because if I say to you on page two, "I've got a question about line fifty-five," it takes you two seconds to find line fifty-five. And especially if we're ever at a town meeting and we've got a whole room full of people and we're all trying to get everybody on the same page, no pun intended. I just think this makes, it just takes, pleads all the frustration out of the conversation about, I don't know what I'm looking at or where I'm looking. Finally, after that, Article seven is the capital improvement expenses. Lines one thirty-two through one thirty-nine, those will change from time to time because we don't spend capital money on every single aspect of our either facilities or parks or equipment. And then town council compensation, again, is the, is required by the charter, as our separate Article eight, which gives the voters the ability to approve that as required by the charter. And then Article nine plus, it can be a variety of things. It's either going to be bonds, it's going to be expenditures from the unassigned general fund, it's going to be transfers from the unassigned general fund. I also think we should start using the terms. Some of these things are called, you know, referred to as a couple of different labels. And I think it's time for us to, you know, to just start using the right terms and just stick to those so that we don't confuse people. You have the LD one override question, which doesn't come up every year. You've got TIF appropriations, which also aren't made every year. And finally, you've got appropriations from state or federal programs like we had with ARBA, the COVID money. So, that's my suggestion for how we go about the budget. The part that I'm suggesting we do a Saturday for is Article six, the municipal budget. I think I would propose that we take those nine categories, split them in half, and have the staff available to us either the Saturday morning or the Saturday afternoon, either in person or promote, whatever fits their schedule. I think that we can get through most of it in one Saturday. I think it's also really likely that there's, there's always going to be questions. You're never gonna get all the answers that you want. But I think we can get through the meat of it and everybody can present what they wanna present. And we can be clear about what things need to be answered. And then in follow-up sessions, we can, we can answer those questions. I did not go so far as to assign dates and times. I did go through the twenty twenty-three, not this past year, because that was such a train wreck and we had so many meetings, to pull the times off Sandy's agenda items. So I have a rough idea of how much time we spent on each of these. If you like this format, I'm willing to take that next step and plug those numbers in and, and see how it goes out. I think that we can get it down to nine or ten meetings, including that Saturday.
With the bulk of them hopefully occurring on already scheduled days.
Right.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, I think, I think that, you know, we have enough meetings between now and that time. But if we use our time judiciously, I mean, there, there is gonna be other business that we'll need to do workshops for. So we might have to schedule, you know, a couple of extra meetings. But I think, I think all of us working together, the council and the staff, if we sharpen our pencils, I think we can, we can work more efficiently than we have in the past.
So, in the past, we did have department head input, but that was only after the town manager had gone through and made their own recommendations, sitting down with department heads. I don't, is that something you're still gonna wanna work through? Or do you, would you rather they just come directly to us?
Okay, but here's my main, kind of just in the conversation, is what are the role? Given what the town manager is right now.
Right.
Which is very much in flux and/or might be another interim and/or might be a full hire. What's the best course for the town council to get this through the process? Because the last thing I wanna do is start to say, here's how this must be done.
Right.
And then in a month, I don't have the job anymore.
I would say personally that we need to play with the cards that we have in our hand and not second guess the future. So, if we start the budget process with you, we may hire a town manager in the interim, but then they would work with you and see the process through, would, I think, make the most sense to me.
And if they wanna change it next year, that's up to them.
Right.
But, but I, we're not gonna revisit this, I think, while we set it, once we set up the schedule.
Well, I think in the, I mean, I've only worked with Nate in this, in this role in the two budget cycles I've sat through. But he was sort of the gatekeeper of what was presented ultimately. So I don't, I don't know if we need that. I don't, that's where I'm, that's what I'm, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, and I did receive back the first draft budget side of staff. And it is, people took the lessons of last June very much to heart. There were very few, even above like one or two percent increases from only one or two departments. So if you are looking for a flat budget, they're certainly willing to play. And if you're looking to go deeper than that, it may be some more conversations. But I think that we're at least on a good footing for not having a twenty percent increase right off the bat.
Well, I liked the language that Krista used at the, at the meeting we had last fall, which is, you know, what do you need to keep the lights on, the status quo? What do we need to keep the lights on, but then, you know, what are all the increased expenses? Either the leases or wages or whatever it benefits. And then, you know, what do you, do you need in addition? You know, what would either, I think in my mind, it's existing services. The last part of the conversation is what, either new equipment, new services, you know, do you feel the town needs? Or people do you feel the town needs? I think using those three buckets is a good one. I personally don't wanna see the, whatever the department heads are preparing until after we have the discussion on revenue. That's my personal preference. Because after we have the discussion on revenue, they may want to make some changes to their proposals one way or another.
Well, I guess, Justine, if you wouldn't mind coming up to the podium, I just, I just had a question about revenue because, as you all know, our FY twenty-three budget, it has not been audited because we were short an auditing firm for this last year. And I know our revenue figures are generally estimates anyway. So I'm just wondering if you feel like if we start with revenue, are we going to have a good enough idea of what actual figures are? Or do you think it would sort of still be really very, very much an estimate at this point?
I feel comfortable, I, so what I could do is I could pull like a three-year average, the last three years of revenues and, which is what I did when I was putting together my draft revenue budget for FY twenty-five. So I think that that would give us a pretty decent idea of where we're at.
Okay.
I think that as, I think the last step of the budget before we actually vote on the budget is a workshop of adjustments. So, it's any new information about revenue, it's Lauren's latest input as far as the town's value is concerned. It's something that may have come up in one of the departments. It could be a new capital expense because something blows up that we didn't know about. So I think the, the last workshop we have is kind of an opportunity for Justine or anybody else to come back to us and say, hey, this has changed. And that, that point in time, as a council, we either decide, okay, well, we need to move something around, or that's okay, we can accept that, or whatever, whatever everybody decides.
Yeah, I'm certainly comfortable with that. I mean, we had a similar format in years past where we come back together and make edits as needed. We had also talked in the template you sent around, which I don't think you printed out, but it was what we had discussed for a timeline. And the workshop one, you were putting in voter input or an initial kind of public hearing. It's not really a hearing, but it just.
That was in my email, was it?
Yeah, it was in an email dated the twenty-seventh. Oh, go ahead, Matt.
Does Justine have to stay there at the?
Oh, no, you don't have to stay there, sorry. Thank you for coming up.
It's the only place that people can hear you.
Right, yeah. But I would still like to make, we still need to make space for the, the required public hearing at the end of this process, which I don't think we documented.
No, I didn't think of that. I think it's a good point.
But that should occur before that cleanup meeting.
Yes, I would think so.
Because I want people to actually be able to still have.
Yep.
I think the weeds we got into in years past were that we, we, we would pretty much bake the budget, it would be done. And then we would have our public hearing, and there's not a lot of wiggle room there. So I'd, I'd like to have that public hearing before we have any final cleanup of the numbers.
Yeah, I think that makes great sense.
Yeah.
You know, the, the part of it is, I mean, one of the reasons for having the opening sort of, people given, giving people an opportunity to tell us what they think the budget should be upfront is really just kind of an attempt to get people to start paying attention. Because it, you know, it, it is kind of like putting together a jigsaw puzzle. And if at the very end you wanna change one of the pieces, it does mean changing other things. So the sooner we can get people into the process, if someone has an issue around, you know, what kind of vacuum cleaner is Mo's gonna buy? It would be nice for them to show up during the discussion on facilities rather than that, that last meeting. And I think that maybe it would be a good idea even for me to put something in that little intro that I have on the agenda that, that points out that fact. I mean, it would only be a couple of sentences to add. But I could certainly say something to the effect of, you know, the, the, the budget is, is built one layer at a time. And if you have an issue about a particular aspect of the budget, your, your best chance to have input is to come when we're talking about that part of the budget. I don't think that will happen.
Well.
But I think it's good to advertise.
Yeah.
The door open is certainly not a bad way, yeah, to go about it.
Do you, do you want other comments on this?
Yes, yeah, please. That's why we're here, yeah.
Okay, yeah, so I, I, this is super helpful for me. I, you know, having a, a year off, it was, and not being part of last year's discussions, it was really helpful for me to have this. So thank you so much. One thought I had is, is it possible, just throwing this out here, out there, to, to combine workshop number one with workshop number two? Which is, the workshop number one would be, is voter input. But if we combine it with revenue, then we're all starting from the same place. And, and, and I don't know that there's a lot, that we need an entire workshop on revenue.
I don't think we do. It's just, this is what, we can't change our revenue figures, you know, they are what they are.
And we actually don't know what they are until July or something like that, until after we pass the budget. This is our best estimate. And, I mean, I think that we could circulate that, you know, Justine's estimates on, as part of the workshop packet and, and for voter input. So that we're all talking about the same numbers when we, when we're meeting, when, when we're having a public hearing. And that's just one thought. And, and then the other thought is, is I, you know, I hate more than most people giving up my Saturdays. They've always been sort of sacrosanct in my family. But I wonder if it makes sense, if there's value to adding a second Saturday for some of these, for, you know, the capital improvements and the bonds and, because I, there, to me, there's value in, in a concentrated, focused discussion as opposed to sort of, you know, meeting it out over a number of meetings. And, and so I, I'm just throwing that out there as well.
Yeah, I think we had, we had talked about doing about, probably two Saturdays initially. So I, I would certainly be comfortable with, you know, concentrating them into two meetings rather than.
The only reason I propose them as separate is because in, and again, in the FY twenty-three budget, when I went back and I looked at the time, we spent three and three-quarter hours talking about revenue.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Do we need to spend three and three-quarter hours talking about revenue? I don't think we could. We, we do.
I wonder if we did use all of that time though, or if it was just set aside? You know, because sometimes the agenda was laid out one way and then we didn't end up using it, you know?
And I, I'm afraid my memory's not good enough.
No, I don't mind either.
It's all a blur. Well, and, and the other, you know, you also had some unusual revenue issues last year that required probably a little bit more.
Yeah, yeah, he was using the year.
Oh, yeah, so I'm FY twenty-three, I think.
More of a, of a, of a average year.
Yeah, normal year, yeah. Okay. Yeah, I mean, I just, I don't know why we would need to spend that amount of time on revenue because it's just not something that we have a lot of control over.
Yeah, I mean, the only, the only aspect we would really have control over is if we amended fees, our fee schedule, you know?
Which we don't typically do as part of the budget process.
No, I mean, last year we did increase the transfer station sticker, but that, I think that was the only thing we changed as part of the budget process.
And again, I think the, I agree. I, I'm, I'm more in favor of trying to, to condense things. And if we don't succeed, have a follow-up meeting. You know, this is, this would be the first time through this process, so I would expect that, you know, we'll amend it as we go.
Yeah.
It's not, not, it's on paper, not clay.
Well, the other, the other thing I would just note is that I know, for example, Open Space wants some time with the council at a workshop in February. And, and I, you know, fully expect and look forward to other workshops on other topics. And, and so the more, more of our regular workshop time that we're tying up with budget workshops, the less, you know, the more, the more likelihood is that we have to be out another evening. And, which, you know, is not that big a deal, but it can, if, if the goal is to consolidate this process and make it shorter and more efficient, then, then it doesn't seem like we've gotten as far down that road as we could maybe. If we have, if we add a Saturday workshop and remove three or four budget workshops, you know, evening or late afternoon budget workshop, so that's, I mean, that's just throwing that out there.
Yeah, I mean, I, I already have workshops planned for, in February for resiliency in the Blueberry Festival. So, yeah, if there's other stuff that is coming up, then we're definitely gonna need more workshop space outside of our regular meetings, so.
You know, I sent you that email, but I can't find it. I struggle my.
It's on, it, it was from.
No, it's in here somewhere.
December twenty-seventh. FY twenty-five.
The email with the workshop agenda?
Yeah, budget, the budget agendas.
I don't know why I have such a difficult time finding. Sure we got, thank you. Yeah, I, you know, if you wanna try and combine voter input with revenue, I'd say we tried, and if it doesn't work, fine. As far as the Saturday goes, I would recommend probably if there's a, if there's a Saturday, if there's another piece of the budget that might require that much time, it's probably capital expenses.
Yes, yeah. I mean, right now you have it as two separate workshops, but I, yeah, I think we could easily cover capital, at least for a whole morning.
Yes.
Yeah.
And then I think because often if we're going to bond something, there's often a cor, you know, corollary between that and capital expenses. So, you know, maybe we could, the morning could be capital expenses, and then the afternoon, if we have one, could be just bookmarked for bonds. If we don't have any, meetings over at lunchtime.
Yeah, or we also would need to talk about TIF, TIF appropriations, and if there's LD one consequences, things.
You know, maybe that afternoon would just be that, that whole part of the warrant article. It's, you know, do we need any of these others, or whatever.
Right, yeah, and whatever we don't get to, we can book another workshop there or something like that.
Yeah, no, that's an interesting idea, yeah.
I mean, what do you, Matthew and Marty, how do you feel about doing two Saturdays?
I, I think it makes sense to, you know, to have a longer, more intensive, more, more continuity discussion than, you know, like, oh, we're gonna talk about this, this week, and then we're gonna meet in two weeks, you know?
Yeah, you'll forget, you forget things along the way.
Yeah. You know, in this scenario, workshops four and five would be capital expenses, so. And actually, six is the bonds and the rest of it, so.
Right, those like three meetings.
You could group those three together.
I, I would like to do that.
Yeah, I think that's worth a try.
Yeah.
I don't know how the staff will feel about it.
Right.
If we pass a budget, I'm sure everyone will be very happy.
Yeah, well, I mean, they also, they also wouldn't have to be here as frequently.
It would be fewer nights out, right, so it's, that's the coin toss.
Yeah, there's value to that.
I think that's a good idea, and I like that.
But so far, everyone who's heard the Saturday idea or approach to it has been highly in favor of it, just in terms of both personal use as well as for how the public receives the information, so.
And to my unofficial little poll, I think I've only heard back from one person who said the January date wouldn't work, but the, but everyone else was okay with both dates, so. I think that the January date is too aggressive myself, but I could be wrong.
What was the date again, Dan?
January twenty.
January twentieth.
Too aggressive for the staff, you mean?
Yeah.
To keep it prepared.
Yeah.
I don't wanna, yeah, I wanna condense things, but I don't want it to be a pressure cooker.
I mean, the warrants need to be finalized in April, mid-April. We did adjust our April meetings because, remember, we adjusted our meetings down for force because of the presidential primary occurring on our, the first Tuesday in March. So our meetings in April are on the ninth and the twenty-third.
Well, could we have a discussion between now and the twentieth of January on revenue and, and citizen input? And is that, or Justine, do you think that's a reasonable ask? And I hate to say if we have to come to the podium every time we're on this.
Yeah, I know, every time we ask you a question, sorry.
We have to move the table to the front of the.
Right.
For the first run-through.
So the first run-through for revenue on January twentieth?
Or we could, we could do it on the sixteenth, which is a regularly scheduled.
Yeah, what if it's two weeks from today?
I think that's doable. I don't see why it's, I, I already have it mostly drafted. I mostly just wanna bounce it off of Josh, just have a, have somebody hear me out. But other than that, I don't see why that'd be a problem.
And it's only the first pass. It's not like it's set in stone.
So my, I guess my question is, if we're not, if it's not an official public hearing, this initial voter input, do we, do we schedule it? Thank you, Justine. Do we schedule it as a workshop space prior to the meeting?
I would.
Or do we wanna do it as like a present, well, it's not really a presentation, but.
We could do a short presentation about how the process is changing.
Right.
Then open it up to anybody who, from the public or online to make their comments, and then have the discussion about revenue. Then open it up to anybody who, from the public or online to make their comments and then have the discussion about revenue.
Or, or even have the revenue discussion beforehand. I mean, I, I just feel like, you know, yeah, half an hour discussion on revenue. I, I, and then if there are other things that we need to dig into more about revenue, that'll flag it, you know, at that meeting. It's not necessarily the last word, but at least we're, the vote, we and the voters are all sort of starting from the same place.
Yeah, I think that's, yeah.
But would we want, so, sorry, I'm just thinking of logistics. Um, would we want to do the revenue presentation as part of a workshop space and then follow up with public input at the meeting?
Yeah, we don't need a public hearing.
No, it's not a public hearing at that point.
But we can allow the public to speak at a workshop, sure.
Or yeah, solicit their comments, actually.
Yeah.
Okay, but we would want to do it all, all in the workshop space prior to our formal meeting?
I think so, yeah. I mean, the question is, an hour and a half, might be a little tight if we get a lot of, if we add a lot of public time. You know, I don't know, could we start at five? I know that's hard for you, Matthew, but with enough notice, maybe?
Yeah.
I mean, my one, my, I did have, I penciled in for the sixteenth workshop space. We needed to check back, loop back in on the principal contract and the MDOT updates. So that, that was what I had planned for the sixteenth, but.
Can we make that part of the meeting? Or is that?
Well, we've eliminated discussions as part of our meeting, so like, I'm happy to put it back in, but I don't, I don't.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have to, there's, there's nothing that prevents us from having a discussion in a meeting if we schedule it.
Yeah.
Yeah, or we could add another, I was trying, I was trying to keep our workshops contained to our regularly scheduled meetings for the next couple of months, just knowing it's budget season. But if we know we need another workshop space right now in January, perhaps we should try to find a date, um, outside of the second and the sixth, what today's the second, the sixteenth.
Well, the fact that we're adding another Saturday will open up our schedule through February and March theoretically.
Right.
Because we're taking those three meetings, which were proposed as before our regular scheduled meetings, and making a Saturday out of it. So that's three dates right there that we're thinking we're not going to need for budget workshops.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think we could do the, certainly any MDOT for the, um, discussion and, and voting, at, you know, in the context of our regular meeting, so I don't think we'll need another.
Okay.
Yeah, I think so. I mean, I, I just don't, I think we could have some discussion if we needed to at that meeting, but I, I'm, I'm, I'm not hearing a lot of dissonance around, uh, around the, the cooperative agreement. Um, so I, I think we're going to be okay to pretty much vote on that.
What about the principal contract?
Yeah, the principal contract, um, we might need to do that, but we also might want to do that in executive session. I, I don't know. I mean, I, I'm going to have a brief conversation with Vanessa tomorrow.
Okay.
So, um, I'll have a little bit more information on what they're thinking.
From a negotiation standpoint, I could see where that might be in executive session.
Sure, sure, okay. Um, okay, well then let's plan on using that workshop space, starting at five o'clock on the sixteenth.
Sixteen or.
Yeah, that sounds good.
For a revenue presentation followed by public input.
Sixteen to this one.
Yeah, which is a regularly scheduled meeting.
Five o'clock.
I, I would ask either Josh or Justine to do the presentation portion for the revenue. I don't, however you want to, if you want to make a PowerPoint or however you want to, I'll leave that up to you, but.
Well, yeah, I would, um, um, yeah, sorry.
No, that, that was the end of my thought, so if you have something.
I would, I would sort of, if we're going to use this as a format, I would, um, just want however the slides or the worksheets are organized in the order that we see them here. So that we can then plug that total number in at the top there and, and we're off and running.
Are you talking, we're just speaking to the revenue section, which would be Article Two?
Yes.
So then you would want it?
That's a good segue, I suppose. If you look at the second document I gave you, which is the proposed municipal budget, um, that is the spreadsheet.
Oh, yeah.
Um, at the same time, if you would also look at that third one-pager that I sent you.
Yeah, that's, looks a lot like our old Excel.
This is what we used to have.
Yeah.
And this is just, uh, this is just the summary page, so there's a bunch of other pages in this worksheet, but I just printed the summary, again, because I don't want to put a lot of time in if you guys are going torpedoing.
Right.
Instead of this one-pager, I'm proposing that we use that other handout that has the revenue at the top, that has, you know, what was approved in twenty-twenty-four, what's proposed for twenty-twenty-five, the difference in dollars, and then the difference on that line is a percent. I've always wanted the percent. I heard a bunch of people at town meeting wish for a percent.
Yeah, people like the percentage.
It's a, it's a something that you have to have discussion of because the percent alone, it doesn't give you the percent of the total. So, you know, you could have a ten thousand percent increase on one line, but it doesn't move the needle over the total hardly at all. So, y- y- there needs to be some caution around that, but we can have that as part of the discussion. And so I, this is actually a spreadsheet, um, and I am proposing that we use this instead of this.
Well, I, I wanted to get Justine's feedback on the forms because, you know, she's working with them.
Yep, she, as I said in my email, she's driving the, that bus.
Right. Justine, did you have a chance to look at Dan's proposed forms that he sent around?
Um, yes, I did. So, I like this format, I like the brevity of it. Um, it's definitely not as in-depth as what we saw last year as far as revenue goes. And this was in Dan's email as well, this breakdown.
Right, yeah.
Um, I'd probably be in favor of including both, just for if there is, if somebody wants to see a more drilled-down version of how those summarized categories come to be.
So in my mind, there are other documents beside this, just as you say, but this is just the one that sits on top of that pile. Because I think we would also want to see the fee schedule, you know, if there's going to be changes to the fee schedule. So, again, I didn't want to go any further than just this, unless people thought it was worth pursuing.
Yeah, we definitely need, um, a summary, right, that we need a summary document. And if you feel like this would serve as that, and then we could have supplementary materials.
Because we'll have each department head's going to have a proposal that will be underneath whatever we have for summary.
Go ahead, Matthew.
So, I mean, as I understand the way Dan presented it, this, this three-pager is basically a replacement for the one-pager. It's not a replacement for all the support documents.
Right.
And in my mind, this three-pager that Dan's proposing, it gives a lot more context than this one-pager. It, it's like, uh, yeah, I, I think that we should pursue this myself.
All the other documents will be available to anybody who wants to dig beneath the surface.
Right.
Okay, so you're comfortable with using this three-page format?
Yeah, I'll work with this format and, um, if I run into any speed bumps along the way, I mean, we can definitely have discussions.
Yeah, well, certainly we'd be open to any feedback you have while you're using it.
Right, um, but I do like the format and I'm, I'm all in on using it.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, it's great. I'm really excited about that. I think that's what people are looking for.
It is, Dan, thank you so much.
Yep. Yeah, I think that the fact it's, it's a little longer is a small price to pay for making it clearer and having it, having people be able to look at both of these documents and, and see that they're in the same, the same order and format.
Um, just, one of the things we also talked about at our retreat was communicating budget materials, um, better this year. Uh, we had talked about doing, potentially doing a mailing, um, at the end of the process, but then I certainly don't want to mail this three-page document because that's costly. But do we want to attempt a flyer again that would then potentially be mailed? How, how do we want to approach communication?
I, obviously, since I created five of the last six, um, I feel pretty strongly about the flyer. It, it was four pages from back, uh, prior to this past year. I think there's definitely some room for improvement. It does kind of follow along the same format and certainly I can change the flyer so that it, it, it reflects this even more closely if people like that. The flyer had more graphics in it, which I think is valuable for people. And the, the flyer is really, in my mind, um, the Cliff Notes ideally for the budget.
Right.
And I think the four pages, you know, it's an expense, but after last year's experience, I'm all in on mailing the flyer to everybody in town.
I'm, I certainly, I mean, I know the school board mails their budget materials to every household, so.
I'm actually all in on mailing everybody in town a postcard telling them that on the sixteenth, we're going to have our first budget workshop, and if you've got something to say, come.
Good idea.
Well, I, I feel like that's a really tight turnaround.
For a postcard, I didn't know if it would be, if we use a service. It's going to cost money, but I think that.
Well, we also haven't, we also haven't addressed the issue with the, um, people who have Raymond addresses on Little Sebago. I think Kyle had to hand-deliver the last batch of materials we mailed to those addresses, so.
Yeah, well, I think we are going to always have two lists. We're going to have that side of town and we're going to have the rest of Gray. And I think it's an anomaly caused by the geography of it and.
And the way those, every day we're direct mail, things work, yeah.
Yeah.
We're just going to end up having two separate lists.
I, I certainly am in favor of mailing the flyer. In fact, we've, we've budgeted some money in FY twenty-four for some mailings that we didn't end up using as part of the, um, failed budget process last, um, summer. Um, so we have funds to do that. Um, I don't, I don't know if mailing out something out for the sixteenth is really reasonable.
It does take time. I, I looked into it for the, the September vote and we just kind of ran out of time.
It takes at least a week to, to get the mail out. And then you, you need prep time to get whatever we're delivering to the mailhouse, I don't know.
Well, you know, I know ideally we want to do public comment at the very beginning and certainly with revenue, but the sooner the public comment happens in the process, the better we are. Is it better to have a mailing on a sane schedule and have a workshop for people to comment the bud, on the budget as soon as possible? Or is it really critical that we combine it with revenue and have it be that first one? I'm not sure it's that critical in my mind that it, that it necessarily be that first one.
That the, the public comment?
The public comment. Yeah, if it happens in meeting two or meeting three, it's still happening a lot earlier. And then if, if this becomes part of that process, then next year we can plan so that, you know, we send it out in December, if we're going to be doing something in the middle, end of January.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think that's, you know, we, it, it might not be perfect, but I think we can, we can live with that. So we would be talking then about, uh, potential budget, um, the public input on the budget kind of, uh, thing on our, at our first February meeting, which would be the sixth, is that right?
That would be my thought.
I, I am also in favor of sending out a postcard, uh, to alert people to the kickoff. A, a postcard is, is what is needed, I think, maybe with that, you know, with a website or a QR code to the website. Um, so that, or both, uh, so that people can get whatever materials we prepared, uh, by then. But, um, I, you know, one thing we heard a lot of last, last September at the, at the town meeting was people didn't know that the budget process was happening, they didn't know the vote was happening. You know, honestly, some of that is on them. I mean, we can't be responsible for scheduling every citizen's time, you know? And, and, and every town has to vote on a budget in one's way, shape, or form. And, um, so, but I, I mean, given that last year was such a difficult budget process, it makes sense to me to go over and above, uh, to, to reach out to them. Um, the one thing I, I just, I don't want to lose this thought, so, um, just bear with me. But I, I also like the idea about, of, uh, mailing out the budget flyer. The issue is we have to do it much sooner because the complaint that we've had is that people get it a day or two before the budget vote and it's just not, it's not early enough.
Yeah, I think this year we'll be able to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, the, part of the problem last year was just, we were waiting till the very last minute for a lot of our final numbers that we couldn't, you know, so we couldn't, uh, put a flyer together.
Well, again, and if, if people like that idea, I mean, I'll start working on the flyer now. I mean, the, again, the idea is to make a format that's, that we can plug and plaid.
Replicate, yeah.
So that it's not something we have to wait until April to strike.
Yeah, from scratch, yeah.
I'm all for, yeah, and I, I think flyer is a good idea. And I'm all for whatever efforts we can do to get input from the public. I just, I'm not sure if we, do we have any data on how effective a postcard is to get people to come and talk to us? Is, is that, is that, you know, cost-effective? Is that, you know, I mean, if it is, if it costs more, but it, it's effective, let's do it. But if we don't have any reason to think it's going to bring anyone out, um, do we do it?
I don't, I don't know if it brings anyone out, but I, I, I do remember Kyle saying recently from the community, community news survey he's been doing that people have been in favor of getting more direct mail to their, I don't know if that's what you were going to say, Josh.
Well, I was going to say, um, I mean, our last, sadly, our last experience for doing the mass mailing around town was for the town manager input, and that garnered five people.
Right.
But at the same time too, in thinking about this, I also see the possibility to include not only saying the, here's the public input part, but also to then further advertise a Saturday meeting for the various departments. So people did say, hey, your public work is way over budget, I want to go get that. That gives them the information to then, so it could kind of like buffer the whole process rather than just say, show up on this one day and give your comment.
Right.
So if no one shows up, that could also be, if you do want to provide input for these various parts, be it the CIP, be it the various departments, it could kind of give at least a sketch point of more information.
We can also advertise the final public hearing at that point.
Well, I think, I think, I would.
Without getting too much into four-point fun on the postcard.
Yeah, my thought would be that we maybe advertise the order of things, but not necessarily put the dates, but have a link to the meeting portal so that people could find dates. That way, you know, someone sticks it on their refrigerator and we change one of the dates. I, I just, I'm not sure we're going to know really ourselves.
We might need to be a little more nimble.
Flexible, I think this first time through until we get some experience with it. But we could certainly, you know, I'll use my email, we could certainly workshop, you know, one through X and this is what we're going to talk about, aren't any dates, but here's a QR code that takes you to the meeting portal and you can find out when the dates will be. I, I think that, I would want to be a little more cautious like that myself.
Okay.
But I think that's a great idea to advertise the rest of the process.
Boy, just kind of get as much involvement.
More bang for our buck.
Exactly. Yeah, and, and to the extent that we can, you know, I mean, I know people have to sign up for an email to get one, but to the extent that we can communicate by email and, and let people know, like, when we know what the dates are going to be, you know, like, more than, like, right now they get an email the day of the meeting, um, or like I do anyway. Whereas if we could communicate more effectively by email saying, you know, like, oh, well, we're pretty, pretty sure what the schedule is going to be for the next two weeks.
Well, in the email, we can always put the link to the portal too, so they can just click on it and see.
Yeah, absolutely.
I, I think the value of the postcard, Matthew, to answer your question, we don't really know, but I think it's worth, and to Josh's point, maybe six people show up, but.
That would be great.
But, you know, we, even if fifty percent of the people read it and the other half throw it away with the junk mail because they don't see what it is, that's a penetration that we've never, ever had. And at least they know.
Right, and we can say, we sent it to you. Right, we tried, you know?
Yeah.
You know, and they have to decide for themselves how invested they're going to be. And, you know, much like the town meeting, you know, people complained about the town meeting and they complained about giving up their Saturday, but, you know, to Ian's point.
People did show up.
People did show up and, and, and our job is to present the community the choices researched as best we can. But they have to make the decision and we, we, we can't take that responsibility away from them. There's a part to be played and, you know, I'll go out on a limb here, maybe I'll, I'll get some email on this, but, but everybody who lives in this town has a responsibility as a member of this community to participate. And I think we try really hard to make. And I think we try really hard to make that easy, and I think we continue to try and improve the process. And we're never, ever gonna get it to the point where people are relieved from that responsibility, they shouldn't be. The more people we get to come up front, the less turmoil and angst there is down the road, and the stronger the 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 final product is.
I I I totally agree that we should be doing whatever we can to get people to participate and to give us their input by whatever means. And if that's also, I mean, and they can do that by email if they wanted to, they could do that on z- on Teams now and.
There's lots of ways to do it.
Yeah.
And frankly, if you don't care, don't show up, because, you know, it's just gonna get in the way.
Okay, so it sounds like we've agreed that the flyer is a necessity at the end, but sooner in the process than we've been doing. Um, and then also, we'd like to send out a a initial mailer, um, inviting people to submit input and follow the schedule online.
Whenever we can get that out in a reasonable time.
But, so just to loop back, we had talked about doing um the public input on the sixteenth, followed followed by the revenue presentation. But it sounds like maybe folks would like the mailer to go out before we have that public input.
I think that makes the most sense. It doesn't, in my mind, you know, if we have the public hearing and the ma- and everybody learns about it after the fa- or if we have the public input meeting and everybody learns about it after the fact, that's kinda counterproductive.
Well, for indeed, yeah.
Yeah. But I mean, in my, you know, in my view, we could be open to public input on the sixteenth as well as February sixth. You know what I mean, i- if somebody came up, it came out.
Oh, yeah, I can, certainly, we can craft the agenda that allows for public input at at the meeting.
Yeah, and encourage people, that, you know, we're gonna have all these meetings, all these workshops. Um, if you, if you, I mean, I don't wanna disrupt our workshop, you know, ability to discuss things in our workshops, but to the extent that we can be open to people coming whenever and and I've taken the, you know, made the effort to come out here, I wanna talk to you, let's hear it.
Absolutely, I think what's just important for people to understand is that what, what it won't turn into is a discussion.
Right.
It's critical for us to hear what people think is important. Um, but but there just isn't enough time to turn each one of those comments into a, into a discussion.
I totally agree with that, too.
And then the other piece of it, and this might, you know, I I'm a firm believer that we need to hear all the ideas that are out there and have all the input and all the perspective. But if people coming to the meeting are saying the same thing over and over again, w- once we stop hearing new information, it's time to stop that conversation and make whatever decision we need to make and and get over. It 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 isn't an opportunity to make sure that every single person has a chance to talk as much as it is to make sure that we hear every single point of view.
Yes.
Other people, you know, a bunch of us are gonna feel the same way. We don't all have to speak to to get that idea out there. Now, that's just my own.
But I mean, we could also advertise the fact that people could come to talk to us at any regular council meeting.
They can call us, they can write us, yep, they don't even have to wait for a meeting. They talked to me at the dump the other day.
Um, okay, so just moving back to the schedule. So it sounds like we'll still do the revenue presentation on the sixteenth and allow for a public comment. I'll I'll just mirror the agenda um on the cup- public comment we have for meetings, where it's a limit of three minutes and it's not for discussion. Um, and then, do we wanna have a, it's not really a hearing, but we we could, we could have a kind of secondary presentation on the sixth prior to our council meeting with a more formal public input session, if that's, and then we we would probably have time for a mailer at that point.
Yeah.
We can certainly share the agenda. You know, we c- we can do it at a two-minute, these, this is the, these are the process changes we've made, you know? This is our our first go-around with the new process, so it's all in your construction, none of it set in cement. But we're not looking to just make changes to make changes. I mean, I think we need to, like, we have to start disciplining ourselves and using the correct language and consistent language. And I depend on Justine to make sure we're using the correct language to do this. The more we discipline ourselves, the more consistent we are over over a period of years, the better the whole community is gonna understand how the process uh works. So I think we do have to be disciplined, and, you know, if if one of us is going down the rabbit hole, the rest of us need to, you know, haul him back.
Right.
And that's what, that's gotta be okay, I think.
So on the on the sixth.
Lord knows I do it enough, yeah.
What were we thinking about on the sixth, i- is there gonna be a a workshop on the sixth? And is it gonna be a budget workshop, or is it gonna be some other?
Well.
Some other topic within.
Right, so that's what I was just, right, that's what I was just gonna ask. So the sixteenth, it sounds like we're still gonna talk about revenue. Just looking at the rest of it, the the next on the list would would be our Saturday sessions. Where we talk about expenses and capital improvements.
Which would be the twenty, the tenth of February.
The tenth of February, right. So if we have a workshop space on the sixth, I I think it would be helpful to have pub- public input going into those Saturday sessions.
Absolutely, yeah. It's never too late for public input.
But I don't, I don't know if we need, I don't know if we need to have a budget discussion. I think I think I'd like to reserve the space on the sixth just for public comment.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I don't think we'll have enough information to actually decide on anything at that point, is that?
Yeah.
Do you agree? Yeah, okay.
Would there be another topic that you would wanna bring?
Um, so, yeah, so the sixth, um, I had a request from the resiliency committee to meet because they are on a timeline for um grant proposals. So I I would like to retain that if possible, so.
Is that five thirty still?
Well, that was gonna be, so I don't think we need to start at five on the sixteenth if we're not having a formal public input session, um.
Okay.
Do, are we, can we start at six o'clock on the sixteenth instead? Do people feel like that's enough time?
And only meet for one hour?
Well, it would be, then go into full council meeting, yeah, yeah.
And they go to council.
Justine's.
She's nodding.
Uh, yes, I think that is it, yeah.
Do you have any idea of the scope of what resiliency may be looking for, or looking?
Um.
I would like them to present us with an agenda before the meeting.
Well, I did, I did have an email, I just don't have it up here in front of me, I can, I can.
I just wanna make sure they didn't have four hours' worth of material to discuss for some grain.
Yeah.
No, I don't get the sense, it's, so they'd like to present and discuss um the material they prepared to en- to enroll in the state's community resilience, resiliency partnership with their top five priorities they've identified in the work they've been doing the last couple of years. Um, I I don't think that will take a ton of time. Um, so I think if we start, if we start at five on the sixth, we can have an hour for each, would that?
Works for me.
Does that?
Yeah.
Sound okay?
So it'll be.
An hour for resiliency and an hour for public comment?
Right.
I'd love to think we get a whole hour of public comment.
Well, I don't wanna, I don't wanna not account for the possibility of a large crowd.
No, I I.
You know, I'd rather have excess time than um not enough for people to speak, so.
You know. I, yeah, prefer the chief to have to tell us nobody else can come in, because there's too many people here.
Oh, that'd be glorious.
Has that ever happened?
No.
Oh, maybe the caucus, twenty sixteen, um.
Comment and resiliency.
Okay, yeah, that works then, let's do that.
And 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 we're gonna work to get the postcard out?
Right, and then I'll work with Josh and I assume Kyle or someone.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, okay, then we'll do a mailer with, that will include um a link to the schedule, um.
I can.
An invitation in particular to the sixth.
If you want, I can take the feedback from tonight and rework the schedule that I put together in my email, if you want.
Yeah, sure.
Or do you wanna just go ahead and do that?
Um, I mean, if you've got it all ready to go, like, if you're willing to do it, I'm happy to.
And I'll send it to you.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, no, sorry.
Oh. Yep, okay, I can do that.
So so I've got the twentieth, um, sort of tentatively on my calendar.
Oh, the January, I'm not sure we need that date.
Okay, so I'm gonna delete that.
That's still premature.
Yeah.
But we can keep the tenth of February. I think that's good, and then, yeah, so, well, it, that's a good point, Matthew, we should select a second Saturday since we all agreed, um, that we would like to do a second Saturday.
Well, if we are combining um voter input, we've got that scheduled, and we've got revenue scheduled. Um, then, and the tenth is going to be municipal expenses. Then in the broad strokes of my email, the next.
The next three.
Group would be, yeah, is gonna be capital improvements plus um bonds, et cetera.
Tips, yeah.
So.
Just looking at March, so we need to, I don't have the old agenda up. I know in April, we weren't really talking about the budget so much as just voting on final warrants. So we probably should have everything baked by the end of March.
Yeah, and I would say, let's not paint ourselves into a corner, because this is kind of experimental. So I would go for the beginning of March for that second Saturday, if we could.
Yeah, I was actually gonna either.
And maybe even.
We could maybe even do that last weekend in February.
In February? Yeah, I'm not opposed to that personally.
Uh, yeah, the twenty-fourth?
Yeah.
You should also keep in mind that in March, we went to the second and fourth.
We did, yeah, so March twelfth and twenty-sixth are our meetings that month.
So we're gonna go the twenty-fourth of February?
Well, I don't know, I had a, if we do something on the tenth, is that too much of a, what do you think, Josh? Is that too much of a turnaround for staff to do another Saturday two weeks later?
Eight, for February twenty-fourth, oh, I'm trying to figure out.
School vacation.
That is school day, school day, he should meet, too, maybe that's not a good, it's probably not a good idea for me.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not a good one.
What if we, what if we made it, what if we made it the twenty-fourth or the second? Or no, choices, no, that bad idea, I take it back. Let's go, I, let's go for the second?
We can do the second.
The second works for me.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, just verify that before you say that, yes, that's worked for me.
Any idea we'd be starting around nine AM?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think less people wanna start later or sooner, I don't know.
Okay.
What, no, you wanna start earlier, were you ahead of time?
Well, I was.
Not before nine.
Matthew and I are not morning people.
I I've got nine.
Crapadon.
I've got nine to three on my, on on my calendar for the tenth.
Yeah, I'm concerned that that not, that three hours is not enough, that that, nine to four, even maybe later. I think we need a serious break in the middle.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I know we agreed to that and then cashed it in as far as the town manager interviews were concerned, but it's a, it's gonna be a a heavy lift. So I think it really does make sense to have some downtime at lunch. I'd say nine to five, myself.
Nine to one, one to five, kind of as split in the day, or?
I'm I'm fine with that, and I.
Say nine to five with.
It's a workday.
On both days, or just the one on March, in March?
I think we definitely need nine to five on the first one.
Yeah.
Um.
And that's still the tenth?
That would be the ten.
We gonna do it at the library?
Um.
Could go either way.
I would say what.
I'd be inclined to do it here, 'cause it's a bigger room.
Yeah, if there's a chance people might show up.
And we can video, and we've got everyone else set to go.
I I would be in favor, though, of getting off this dais, though, and having a more inform, no, no, okay.
I'm only one vote.
I just, I just think these things, it would would are, work better in a more informal communication style, but I, um.
From a videoing, recording.
But maybe not from a recording.
Yeah, I just think, I mean, I understand it separates us, but it's not, I think we kinda have to get over that to some extent. It's not like it's a us and them kind of thing.
No, not so much that, I just, I think it's just easier conversationally to be.
We could do the second uh public input at the library, if you wanted a more.
Oh, I'm not even talking about public input, I'm talking about our, just our Saturday workshop.
All day.
Got it.
Our interaction with staff.
Yeah.
I mean, definitely, we should, if if we're gonna stay in these seats, we, there should be a table here.
Closer up, yeah.
You know, with microphones for them, for people to sit at.
Because I assume that we would, it would be on, we'd still have, you know, we'd be online, so it would be a hybrid meeting.
Yeah. I don't know, maybe you and Kyle can decide what would be best, um.
Yeah, I mean, we guys are gonna do it, it's a majority thing.
I mean, I I can sit up here, it's just, it's just, you know, it's all day, we're like looking down on people instead of just conversing in a circle. I don't know, it's just, I see what you're saying, Dan, in terms, I'm not, I'm not so much concerned of the visibility of it, it's just the.
Vibe.
The vibe, yeah, it's all day, but um if it's gonna work better logistically for us to be up here, then perhaps, like Matthew said, we could just have a table closer up, so we're conversing more.
Yeah, wouldn't it, we wouldn't have to stand at the podium if we had a long presentation.
Right. Okay, so let's say nine to five on the tenth, and then on the.
Podium for a table.
What's that?
We could swap out the podium for a table.
Right, something like that.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. And then on the second, yeah, and you were asking if we needed the whole day, I don't. It's possible we don't.
We could book the whole day and just, I think just for now, let's not worry about it.
Right, we could just. Okay.
I think that's a safe bet.
Yeah.
Okay, let's.
Nine to five on the second.
Let's just say. Yeah, we'll just say nine to five, and if we finish early, then all the better.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and then, one other thing I wanted to raise, which is, unless, does anyone else want to say anything before we move on? About the schedule or documents or anything? Um, it's not specifically budget-related, but I would like to circle back during this process to um whether or not we are in favor of having any kind of vote on the charter and changing the town meeting requirement. We had a lot of feedback about that during this last process, so. Um, if we did want to do that, we would need to make sure it's on the, um, what, you know, the documents we vote on, the referendum documents in time, so.
I I heard people ask for that, and after that meeting, you'll never get me to agree to it. We we needed to have that meeting, and again, it goes back to the point where I I realize it wrecked everybody Saturday. But um in in, from my mind, even though it was kinda sad how we got to that point, it was an amazingly productive day. People left that meeting knowing more about how this process works and and what's involved than any other thing I've done in in all the time I've been on the, on the, on the council. So I hear people, you know, I understand it's an inconvenience, but it happens once in a blue moon, and so I I think it's important. I think it's really valuable, and and I didn't think that going into it, but after that experience now, I I won't vote to change that.
Well, I just, I'm not saying one way or the other, but if we do open the question up, I think we need a secondary question about whether they, a charter commission would need to be formed, I think.
Every time.
Every time you open that up, so that's just a caveat.
Yeah. Yeah.
That would potentially result from any kind of question we ask. I personally feel strongly that, I hear what you're saying, Dan, and I I do agree that the meeting was productive in a lot of aspects, but I also think it was very much um the, a format that left a lot of people unable to attend. And I I think, you know, having a referendum vote a second time makes a lot more sense from an inclu- an inclusionary standpoint, personally. So I would be in favor of at least posing the question to people.
Yeah, I I would agree, I mean, I, there were, what, a hundred and fifty people watching?
Almost two hundred, yeah.
Who didn't, who weren't able to vote.
Right.
And um so I, and and, I mean, it's true that in June, where we normally, where we normally vote on the budget, I mean, we have fewer voters than, say, in in a November election, especially in a big election year. But um I I I still think it's problematic. I mean, I I'll feel much more kind, uh, much more in favor of eliminating the in-person meeting if we're able to eliminate LD one, which is uh gonna be in the, you know, the legislature supposedly will vote on it this session.
Will that be concluded? So we would need to vote on our warrants and any ballot questions by April, do you know if that session will be con- will conclude by then?
No, I do not guarantee, yeah, no, I I don't think we can depend on it.
Yeah, the session closes after we have to.
No. Does it, I couldn't recall if the schedule.
Yeah, so it, they may not have made a decision by the time we have to put a ballot together.
But it's it's LD one that, i- is in part that forces us to revote on the budget, or at least some component of it. And and uh that, it just ca- causes tremendous confusion in voters' minds, understandably. I mean, it it takes a while to kinda wrap your brain around it, so I um I just think it would be a lot easier on us uh and on everybody if if we just, that's not something we have to worry about.
Well, I I thought that our charter required a vote on the. Well, I, I thought that our charter required a vote on the budget regardless of LD one. I mean, that, is that.
Yeah, they do, it did, I think what, what Anna's saying is that we would, if the, if LD one fails the first time around, it ultimately requires, the whole budget fails, so we have to vote again, um.
The whole budget fails if LD one fails.
Right, it complicates the, our process of voting and, and confuses people, I agree with that, but, I mean.
Right. Right.
Not all towns, you know, have a, have an automatic vote on the budget. Uh, you know, an automatic public vote on the budget if they're not overriding LD one, but my understanding is that we would have to do that regardless of LD, of LD one.
That's because our charter, I think a lot of town council formatted governments, um, the council is the sole vote on the budget, whereas our town requires it goes to the public for ul- you know, ultimate approval, so I think that's where, I think if you have a town council voting on it, they would just also vote to override LD one if they were in favor of their own budget, so.
Well, no, I mean LD one, i- if, if, my understanding of the way LD one was, works is that in, if, you know, that in certain circumstances, you have to go to a public vote if you are going over certain thresholds.
Correct.
Um, regardless of what your charter says, you know, so like.
No, not to the voters, no. Different, different, um, different forms of government do it different ways, there are some town council governments, I think Falmouth is one, where the council decides on the LD one question.
Right. Right.
Um, and our, our charter's not set up that way.
Hmm, well. Yeah, I guess I'd be fine with having the voters, you know, like, having, having some, well, if we're gonna change the charter, I guess I'd be more inclined to change the charter so that it wasn't, the public always didn't have to vote on a, we didn't always have to hold an election on a, on a budget, if we're, if, if there's nothing unusual on the budget and it's you know, not a big increase or anything like that. Um, I, I'd prefer to do it, and just say it's within our, our purview to vote on, on the budget.
Yeah, I think that would require a whole budget, a whole charter rewrite, I, I think if, that would, that would, that would change the form of government essentially, um, I, I.
Would require. Think it'd be a pretty hard sell too.
It might be a hard sell.
I, I don't think, yeah.
Whereas I, I think what we're asking people is to change just one element of the charter that requires us to have a town meeting form of vote once a budget referendum has failed the first time around, so this question would just have a second referendum vote. That's what we're.
Or just, if, we would always vote on the budget by referendum.
Right, yeah.
Whether it's once, twice, or three, four times.
Right.
Done that before?
Well, I mean, we can circle back to this, I just wanted to raise it again so we didn't lose the, um, question, I mean, people want some more time to think about it, we certainly don't have to decide tonight whether we're adding this, but.
Yeah, I gue- I'm, I'm tending to agree with, with Dan, I guess, because, I mean, the problem is a low turnout budget, I mean, a low turnout election, I think, is, is the basic problem, and then to say well, we didn't, we didn't have a good result with one low turnout election, let's have another low turnout election. Yeah, I'm not sure.
There's, there's no, I don't think there's, there's no s- there's no perfect solution.
Right.
If you have, if you have apathy amongst the people who have the power to make the decision, you know, when we've had the budget, during COVID's a good example, the budget failed.
Mm-hmm.
But because of COVID, we couldn't have the town meeting, we had to have another referendum, and that referendum was passed by a significantly smaller number of people who came out to vote for that.
Yeah.
So having a referendum isn't a panacea, it's not gonna solve the problem. Will it enlist a larger percentage of people than a town meeting? Yeah, probably. Um, is it easier to vote in a referendum than to ti- than to attend what could possibly be a whole day meeting? Yeah, definitely, but the value judgment I'm making is that for the health and the benefit of the community, that public meeting is, is valuable. And I think moving it to a referendum because it's easier for people or people have difficulty making a meeting that is detrimental to the long-term benefit of the whole community.
I, I think the size of our community though ki- will s- ultimately dictate whether a town meeting format is, is a workable solution long-term though, I mean, I, I think we, we have eighty-five hundred people in this community, granted, not all of them vote, um, some of them are children, but uh, that's just a very large amount of people that, I mean, potentially you could theoretically have that many show up to a town meeting, and then where would you put them, you know, like?
Yeah.
Um. Right, so I, I don't know, I, I, I would still be in favor of asking a question, we had a lot of feedback on it, and if people wanna keep it the way it is, then that's, that's how they would.
Yeah.
Um, but it's not, Marty, it sounds like we are kinda tied on that point of view, do you have a preference?
Keep things the way they are.
Keep things the way they are, okay, well, maybe we don't ask the question then, it sounds like Matthew and Dan and Marty.
If I may put it my two cents, it's just, um, again, like we said, the, when Nate left, is this is the time to be slow, steady, and keep with what we're doing.
Mm-hmm.
I think this is definitely a holdover, but I would say next year might be a better year to address it when we have a little bit firmer feet. In case if you start a charter commission and that suddenly blows up, to someone wants to blow up the entire town and disincorporate the town or any other weird output.
Right. Okay, well, I mean, it sounds like we don't have, um, the majority to move forward with it, so let's just say.
Well, you can check, like you said, you can check again, because something happened in the next.
We could, we could check the polls, yeah, we could check the polls later.
Yeah, I think we should check it again on this, yeah.
We could do a public comment and have everyone say, wow, that's a horrible, I, I don't wanna do the public meeting again, so then we should change it based on that.
We could ask to get as part of the input process, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and I guess I'm not diehard opposed to asking the question, but I, I think there was a lot of value in that, in that. Um, a lot more value in that than in another low turnout election, in, in having the town meeting, and.
Yeah, I agree, the people in the room were certainly more informed than when they arrived, but.
And the people watching.
And people watching, but um, that probably was around three hundred people total, so I don't know if it's really representative, that's where I'm, that's where I struggle with it.
From a sample standpoint, I'd say it's a great representation. I mean, if you're, if you're doing a, um, poll or something like that, you're not gonna poll the whole community.
Mm-hmm.
But I think if you have, you know, that largest segment of the community come out, I think we covered, we covered the spectrum there, I mean, that, that group was pretty evenly divided at first.
Mm-hmm.
And things changed over the course of the day, I, I would submit that that was pretty representative of the community as a whole.
I, I see, yeah, what you're saying is the sample size.
But it was also representative of people that were willing to give up, you know, a whole Saturday to, to their process, and why shouldn't those people have a chance, you know?
Willing and able to, yeah.
Right.
Well, it's. We're a representative form of government, we're sitting here now because everybody else in town's decided they don't want it.
That's pretty much why I'm here.
I don't mean that disrespectfully, I mean, but that basically, you know, that's what it is, that, and, and, so that's our job.
Right, well, with a, with an uncontested election, that's what it is, and that's, that's what, you know, that's how I got elected, was with no opponent, so.
Yeah, I look forward to the day we're fighting each other, getting a seat at the table.
Yeah, so, so. What Dan says is perfectly fair, for those of us that won in uncontested elections, but we're here because nobody else wanted it.
I look forward to a day when it's different.
Okay, well, we'll circle back around later in the process, it sounds like maybe there's momentum for leaving things as they are, but we can get a check on that once we hear from people during the process.
Yeah.
Yeah. When four hundred people show up with pitchforks and say otherwise.
Right, okay, so I, uh, am, we can adjourn, oh.
Can I quickly, could I, I just wanna assess to make sure, so January sixteenth, which is the next town council meeting, has six PM?
Six PM, right.
Okay, workshop beforehand.
For rev- for revenue presentation.
Revenue, alright.
And with a brief public comment as part, you know, just a three-minute limit.
Yep.
No discussion, kinda comment.
And then the next one would be as January sixth.
February sixth will start at five, which will include a public input session.
Big public input, yep, and that's resiliency.
And then a resi- followed by resiliency because they need, are on the timeline.
Alright. And then we'll get a Saturday, February tenth from nine to five PM.
Yep, and then the second of March.
And then my second March.
February tenth?
February tenth.
Yep, and then Saturday, March second for the second Saturday session.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then with a meeting, right now, February twentieth with nothing scheduled beforehand, correct?
February twentieth.
Yep, with no workshop scheduled at this point in time.
I, I will have a workshop.
Okay.
Uh, just count on a workshop, it probably, yeah, most likely you could say six for now as a pencil it in kinda thing, but uh.
Okay. Yeah.
Do you wanna?
Okay.
And my two takeaways from this is I'm going to take that email with the workshop schedule, rework it based on the discussion and send it to you.
Okay, that works.
To.
We should post it online if we have a more firm timeline.
Yep.
Um, I don't know if we need to, I don't think we need to vote on it, do we need to vote?
It could be part of the, no, I don't think so, but it could be, certainly be part of the packet for the sixteenth.
Yes, yeah, that would work.
And some people will see it as part of that packet.
Yep.
We, and we can obviously make adjustments to that. And I'll also start to work on a flyer that follows what we've agreed to for the budget and the budget summary.
Right, and then Josh, we can need to connect on a mailer for the, for the sixth and the schedule in general, yeah.
Yep, for the sixth, got it.
Um, packet materials for the sixteenth would be due the twelfth, I don't know, the eleventh if, if possible.
Okay. One eleven twenty-four.
Thank you.
Okay, any final thoughts before we adjourn? Okay, we will adjourn at six fifty-one PM, um, and resume at seven o'clock for our regularly scheduled council meetings. Thank you.